Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I missed that up.
Tough to do it with a bunch of other people remotely and everything else.
All right, Brian, is this where we hand it over to you?
Sure, sure. So is everyone's here? Everyone's?
You know, I do not see Sharon.
Yeah, I don't see her either.
We can, what's that? Yeah, I can't remember if she said, I remember she said she had a church event, but I thought that was on the fourth Thursday of the month, or the third Thursday of the month. I know Scott has a meeting on the third Thursday, you said?
Fourth Thursday, I won't be here.
Okay.
But I might, I might, I'll probably show up late, so I'll probably do the Zoom late.
I know Sharon, I mean, this is probably near and dear to her heart. So, I mean, we can give her a couple more minutes, I mean, if does this sound like the plan? Give her a couple more minutes, maybe five minutes, or?
Sure.
Maybe somebody give her, I don't have her phone number, so.
Is anyone else here? There's like feedback coming in and out.
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you guys. It's just like a buzzing static noise. You hear that, Bob?
Do, yeah.
I do too. It's not from emanating from here. I'm up in my son's bedroom.
Did I take care of that?
No.
Maybe if everybody could try unmute, uh, turn powering off the microphones and powering them back on.
Okay.
For me?
Yeah. Yeah, turn it back on now.
Do you hear me?
Yeah, maybe if you mute Town Hall and see if it goes away real quick?
Sure. Just put a thumbs up if you, if it does.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so it must be coming in from our end somehow.
You just make sure the cables are nice and smooth in the lockout there. The only thing that's different is I put that monitor down on the table. Maybe try, I don't know if you want to try turn that monitor off and see if that makes it go away. Seems to be better.
It does seem to be better.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not.
I don't hear it anymore.
Better?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, now it's back.
Yeah, maybe it's me. Maybe it's me. Um, maybe I just turn my microphone off. Is it better now?
Nope.
Nope.
Just for giggles, can you walk towards that monitor again?
It falls in laundry floor, can't do that. It pulls static electricity.
I haven't pulled it off, so I haven't pulled it off this side of it.
Some what? Uh, maybe, no, maybe. I have my computer up here on the cable.
Nope, still going. Well. No, as soon as you get close to that chair, it comes on. That's.
You have tinfoil in your pockets?
Yeah.
Maybe move, move your microphone away and pull that other one from the side over and see if it still does it? Wow.
How's that?
No, same thing. As soon as you walk away from it, it stops. And as soon as you walk up, it starts up again.
It's not that bad.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is.
I mean, it's not like we can't.
I'll troubleshoot it tomorrow and we'll see, or.
Well, Sharon is here. Sharon?
Hold on.
Hello, hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Sharon. Hi.
Hey Sharon, are you all set for us to get started here?
I am.
Okay, excellent. All right, so Brian, um, if you want to take over?
Sure, sure. So, this year, as you guys noticed on the first workshop agenda, I started off by doing a budget discussion, um, which is new. I thought it would be helpful for everyone, uh, just to kind of bring everyone up to speed. Uh, there's, this year, um, you know, obviously this might be the first go through for some of you guys and, um, but i- in general, this is a very difficult budgeting year, um, in, in a lot of respects, um, due to COVID. Um, I made a little, um, you know, memo here that I'll read off. Um, so going into this year is particularly challenging for the council to evaluate the operating budget for several reasons. Uh, just things to keep in mind. Uh, COVID-19 obviously caused a lot of challenges. So 2020 was a unique year in many ways. From a budgeting standpoint, I implemented uh, spending freeze in February of 2020. Um, I did this because it was apparent that the projected revenues in FY20 were not going to meet our budgeted amounts, and that we were going to have revenue shortfalls in, in several categories. Um, municipal court revenue, recreation revenue, uh, tax collections. So going through this budget, just keep that in mind that in FY20, um, when you see certain line items, uh, expenses that weren't spent, it was generally due to the fact that I, I contacted all the department heads and put a spending freeze and told them as of February to June 30th, it was only essential purchases. Um, so obviously we wanted to continue on operations. We didn't want to hinder them from that standpoint, but we didn't want them going out and, you know, buying supplies and those type of things that weren't necessary because there was just so many unknowns at that point in time. Um, so, this, uh, this, you know, this creates a little bit of a challenge because historically the council, when we go through the individual departments, would look at the budget to actuals in previous years and see what we spent in the previous year, and that's how they would kind of forecast and project. Um, so, you know, that's going to cause some challenges based on the FY20 actuals. Um, I also would add that this isn't the best budgeting practice, um, from my personal opinion. Uh, this, what this does is it generally punishes department heads when they don't spend 100% of their budget. So what you end up doing, or what they end up doing is spending uh, in previous years on things at year end just to meet their budget amount. And I'm not saying all that, you know, I know Lisa's listening. She's actually, you know, one of the most, um, I'd say frugal of all, so, um, we do see it.
You can say beep.
That, yeah, um, but, but generally, you know, not even just at Hopkinton from a budgeting practice. If you, if you take away people's budgets for not spending it, they're going to go out and spend it. Um, and that's not something we want to do. Uh, it's basically, we want them to spend what they, on what they need, um, and not necessarily just spend for the sake of spending so that if they need the money next year, they have it. Um, and they're, they're basically spending just to keep their budget. Um, so that's generally not the, the best practice. Just, that's just my two cents. Um, another aspect that makes this year challenging is that in FY20, uh, our budget was rejected, which is the first time in seven years that I've done the budget that that's happened. Um, this is unique, but the voters rejected the budget, which ultimately means that we reverted back to the FY19 budget. So when you look at the FY20 versus FY19 budget, they're essentially the same thing. Um, with the exception of the, the school, um, and this is in our town charter. So the budget to actuals in FY20 are going to look even more, more strange because the actual FY20 budget was never, um, approved. So that's just another thing to keep in mind as we go through this. And then another, a couple other things that I thought were worth mentioning, um, were, you know, the, the COVID, the impact of COVID-19 on FY21. Uh, the town is still experiencing shortfalls in revenue townwide, um, and it, and is expecting probably a significant deficit in FY21. Um, and this will come into play later on when we talk about fund balance. And I'll, you know, I'll get into, you know, great detail on that and, and walk you through where we're at and where we have been over the last couple of years. Um, but this creates a problem because we don't, we don't know at this point in time what that shortfall, what that deficit in the current fiscal year is going to be. Um, so we, we have to be, uh, somewhat prudent, uh, on spending that fund balance until we know what, what our shortfall and deficit is going to be. And we certainly know that there, I'm estimating uh, on a conservative side, probably 400,000, um, and hopefully less. Um, but, you know, we know recreation, we're not going to see any revenue from that department, um, pretty much as a whole, um, which can be slightly offset by the expenses, and, and we'll talk about that, you know, when we get to the recreation department, but um, just, just another thing to keep in mind. Um, the last item is that we have, uh, as you guys are aware, we have five unions in the town. All five unions are up for negotiation in FY22, the year we're, we're currently budgeting. So I've put in 1% pay increases, um, which is very conservative. Um, you know, we never really know how those negotiations are going to go. I'm hoping that the unions will be, I, I hope things go, go smoothly considering the COVID situation and the financial impact that the town is, has felt from COVID. So I'm, I'm being conservative on that from a budgeting standpoint. Um, so just know that it's in there at 1%. Um, Public Works, actually, their contract was up in FY21, the current fiscal year. We didn't, we pushed off negotiations a whole year, so now they're going to be renegotiating in FY22. So that year, we're going to have to do something, you know, they're not going to just take a zero pay increase because the rest of the town got pay increases and, and, and frankly, it, it wouldn't be right to do that. So what I did was I did a 1% for the current fiscal year and 1% for the next fiscal year. Now, is that realistic? I, I don't know. I, I doubt it. Um, realistically, we average about 2% a year on pay increases, and that ranges, generally, we, we've structured it where it was 1% in year one, 2% in year two, and 3% in year three. Um, so chances are, they, they might see another percent in there, um, in, in FY22, just to, to make them whole. Um, so just, just a couple of things I just wanted to mention to you guys as we go into this, um, on, on a, on a high level, uh, things that we need to just keep in mind going forward. So with that being said, um, we can go to, if you guys want to, if you have any questions right now, or if you want to.
Brian?
Yeah.
Just what was the, what was the union that, that took zero this year? What was that union called?
That was Public Works.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, and, and actually, uh, speaking of Public Works, that's actually the first department uh, that we would be reviewing tonight. So if you guys want to open your budgets up to Public Works Department. Um. Yeah, I, I look at it, I'm looking at an Excel version, so someone might want to just read off the.
Thirty-four.
Was that full hundred section, Brian?
It's, uh, 600, Department 600.
It's page thirty-three.
Page thirty-three, page thirty-four.
So for those who, um, so if, if you guys aren't familiar with the, the way we've structured the budget, it's generally for each department, the first tab is, um, like a payroll tab, so it just breaks down the, the wages. Uh, generally, this is, this is all contract driven. Um, so it's not much that, you know, we can do about it, uh, or change at this point, but we certainly, um, I'm open to any questions and, um, you know, so at any point, if you guys have questions, just feel free. Um.
Hey, Brian?
Anybody? Yeah.
Brian, it's Mike. I'll let you go through your spiel. When I get through, I'll talk a little bit about DPW.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead and I'll finish up at the end.
All right, so, um, so this is if anybody has any questions on, on the payroll tab. If not, we'll go on to the, the department.
Got questions for me?
Okay, so the, the Public Works Department, um, generally in the past, what, what we've done is we've gone through section by section, um, just because it gets quite tedious to go through line by line. So I'll read off a section, and then, uh, I'll take questions on anything. And if there's anything that I think is, you know, worth discussing, I'll, I'll approach that and, and address that first. Um, so again, with the public work section, compensation and salary, um, we've worked in the pay, um, of 1% and 1% for FY20 and 21 for now. But if anybody has any questions on that section, feel free. Okay, um, general road and maintenance. Any question? Yeah.
I have a question about the tree trimming.
Yeah.
Um, this is in addition to the money that we set aside?
Correct.
Doing the tree?
Correct. So we have a restricted account that we set up two years back, um, that we put money aside for. It was $72,000 the town put aside because there was a lot of concern with residents about the, um, dead trees in town. I believe, uh, you guys probably know more about it than I do, but there was some gypsy moss or some insect that was causing all sorts of problems. Um, so that the town was concerned. Uh, the council, uh, decided to fund some money and put in a restricted account. We just completed the contract that we, we did an RFP. We had people go out and, uh, do some tree cutting for us. They got through the whole list of trees that we, that Public Works identified as, um, high risk. And we actually negotiated for them to do it in the winter versus the spring and summer, which actually saved us a bunch of money. Um, so we still have some funds remaining in that restricted account, um, for future tree trimming. Um, but Sharon, to answer your question, this tree trimming line item in general road and maintenance, that's for the tree warden, who is Scott Ahern, and he does, this is a little bit misleading because he does do work and tree trimming for the town, but he doesn't accept, uh, the payment. He actually asked the town to donate it to Recreation Department. Um, and that's something that kind of fell through cracks, honestly. Like I only picked up on it because I had a conversation with him um, recently, and he mentioned that to me. So we kind of, uh, are readdressing that now, so we're going to make sure going forward that that money actually gets put into the rec department as a donation.
Hey, Brian, I got a question about tree trimming.
Sure.
Uh, I know they've been pretty aggressive in my area, my, my area over on Tom McQuaid, Collins Road down through there. I did get a, did get an email from a, uh, uh, from a nice lady. They actually trimmed the trees down and, but they left it all right on our property. What's the rule?
That's what they.
Is it supposed to be, if it's on town property, it goes away? If it's on the landowner's property, do they get to keep it? Or XYZ? Because I noticed they took a big one down on James Street and Tom McQuaid. It's not a big thing, but it's a big, it's a big piece of wood that's just sitting on the side of the road. Michael, who's on the hook for that? The contractor that does the vendor, or store the town?
So Mike, to answer your question, uh, you know, you kind of actually just made me realize that generally when we do these, the department heads in attendance, and, and Dave's not on right now. But if you could wait until he gets on, he'd be able to give you a much better answer that, on that question. Um, and he should be joining us any minute. Um, so we, we'll go continue through, and anything that's operational like that, um, when he gets on, we can have him answer that question for you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah. All right, so if you guys have any other questions on that section, um, the other thing that I, I think is worth mentioning, just to give you guys a little more background, is that the salt and sand, uh, line item in, it, we have a restricted account set up that we, we call winter, emergency winter operations, which basically covers salt and sand and overtime. Um, so we've decreased that line item from years past and funded a restricted account. So the, the logic was, instead of putting the money in there year after year, let's reduce our operating expense and just put some money aside into a restricted account. So if we go over, we can transfer that money out of the restricted account and cover those expenses. And that way, it allowed us to decrease that line item. So that was something we've done in the past, and we've been pretty fortunate the last couple of years where we haven't really dipped into that restricted account because we've had mild winters. But this year, um, we're, we're already, we're, we're going through it pretty good. Um, even though there's, it looks like we haven't spent anything this year. Um, that was partially because Dave was having trouble getting salt and sand. Uh, but they're going through the bins. They have big bins of salt and sand uh, at Public Works, and they're going through it pretty quickly over the last few storms. So we're going to have some pretty big expenses filling that back up.
I, I do have a question, uh, Councilman Harris.
Yep.
Do you see any need to, uh, have a separate line item, uh, in the budget in regard to any significant, uh, tree removal that would be beyond what the normal amount would be because of uh, dead trees? Do we still have adjusting in town?
Uh, Scott, I think we're in good shape. Um, we have that restricted account. Uh, I was, I was mentioning that we, we negotiated a lower fee than was awarded by letting them do it in the wintertime. So the contractor gave us a reduced rate, and we still have, I want to say, I, and I can find the exact number here. Um, I want to say there's, there's roughly $30,000 left in that account. So we, we used just over half of it this year, cutting trees down, and we still have funds left for future tree trimming.
Thank you.
Brian, this is Bob. Just, uh, back to the salt and sand. I'm reading, as you were explaining that, I was looking at the, the line after that, the transfer to the Winter Operations Fund. Is that what you were explaining?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, so we, we transferred 10,000, and we did that a couple of years in a row. And that's a good example where you can see where our budget, uh, didn't change from FY19 to FY20. So there's, there was still 10,000 budgeted, but we didn't, I didn't transfer the money that year because in the actual FY20 budget, we didn't allocate another 10,000. That's only there because it reverted back to the previous year budget.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, so moving on, uh, vehicles and equipment maintenance townwide. Building and operations. There, there is something probably worth noting on this, um, that the first line item, repair and maintenance townwide, um, that covers an array of projects that, that don't rise to the level of a capital improvement. So this year, there were three items that were brought up by department heads that needed to be addressed. And instead of putting a CIP together for, you know, 6,000 to, to 10,000, we, I talked with Dave and we went over the individual projects, and he thinks that between the remaining budget for this year and the slight increase I gave him for next year, he'd be able to complete those projects. Um, and they, they include, um, the, the water, uh, system, the well at Public Works, and animal control is, is very problematic. The, the water's actually coming out orange, and they've got it tested on a couple of occasions, and they're, they're having some issues there. So that's something that we really wanted to address, um, especially with animal control. You know, they're using it for the animals and, um, so we, we wanted to address that this year. The, uh, their house, there, we had an air quality test there, and there's, the air quality is very poor, and we believe it's stemming from the rugs. So we were going to have someone come in and redo the rugs at their house, and then also a shed at Animal Control. So again, those, those projects weren't large, super expensive projects. So we, we saw our best fit to put it in the operating budget as opposed to creating a small CIP project. So just want to give you a little background on that. So any other questions on building and operations?
Is that strictly, that, strictly in regard to Councilman Harris? Is that strictly in regard to Public Works or everything?
Well, that specific line item, time, townwide buildings, is actually town, townwide. So Public Works generally does all sorts of projects around the town. You know, they've done projects for the Town Hall where they replaced the rugs there. You know, it, it, it really, uh, they repaired the roof at, um, the police station when there was, jingles were, were rotting off. Um, so they, they'll use that for a wide variety of projects throughout the town as they come up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, one of the things, and it's probably off subject, but one of the things that I'm interested in, and, and it hasn't really been used by the town for years, and we used to live next to it, is the Briggs Memorial Park. And I don't know if that's properly under Public Works or the Recreation Department, but uh, I think we should look at, uh, the potential of that park and bring it up to wherever it can be used for the enjoyment of the public. And at the same time, uh, as I understand it, Asia Lloyd Briggs, who, like, doing genealogy, I found out he was the second cousin to one of my grandfathers. But when he bequeathed that property, or the family bequeathed that property to the town many years ago, was my understanding that the town had an obligation when they accepted the prop. And you got to remember, I was really young, so I don't know all the details, that the town was supposed to maintain that property. And it's on Route 16, Route 216, not far from Muff's Auto Parts, uh, in Ashway. So I think we should be looking at how the town is maintaining that property and whether or not, maybe not this fiscal year, but addressing the needs of, uh, that. And I think other people have been, uh, interested in, in that park.
Okay, so that seems like something that would fall under Recreation, and we can certainly bring that up with Mary. And she'll probably have a lot more information about that specific part.
I think, I think they might be dealing with it already, but I'm just curious because, you know, we, sometimes, uh, I don't, people talk about obtaining new things, but the big question is how do we maintain things that we already own or have possession of?
Well, not to interrupt Scott, but I talked to a gentleman who is on one of my.
Can't hear you.
One of my friends, Dave Prescott, um, from the scenic and wild, uh, riggers, he, um, he also worked for Save the Bay, had mentioned to me uh, that, um, and this is just kind of, you know, maybe in the works, nothing solid, and just maybe some, some rumor, but that they, um, potentially were interested in maybe getting with the town and because of their organization, maybe, uh, applying for some grants because it is the Ashway River. They're into identifying the rivers and, and things in town. So they may be looking forward to potentially getting some money to do some things, you know, in collaboration with the town, to kind of clean it up maybe, you know, put some signs up, uh, maybe some picnic tables and, and kind of make it more accessible. So that was something that he had mentioned and talked about. I don't know how concrete it is, but, um, I know that's kind of on their radar potentially.
Well, I, I think I recall my next door neighbor, Lane Calderon, who's the representative, uh, had, had mentioned it to me, but, uh, I remember when that was built, when they had put restrooms in, and I remember, I think they were vandalized. They also had some drills in there. Uh, there's a big sinkhole inside that, so I know that area very well because I lived next door to it until mid, uh, 1970s or something. So, uh, I know the, the site pretty well, although I haven't been in there in quite a very long time. But I think we should, there's something that we should have on our radar screen. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so moving on, uh, motor fuel. This is, again, this is driven by, um, the seasons, you know, if, if we have a, a mild winter, um, generally, we, you know, in years past, you can see we had it budgeted much, uh, 5,000 higher, but, um, we, we reduced it, and I, I think this year, we're going to see, we've already spent 13,500, um, to date through, through today, even though we're only seeing. through today, even though we're only seeing, uh, four thousand through December 31st. So that, that line item will certainly get spent this year because as, as you know, we've gotten hit with a couple of storms. So any questions there?
No, can we go back? If you're, if you're all done, can we go back to vehicle maintenance?
Sure.
All right. Here's tier, here's, here's my thing on it, on, on vehicle maintenance. Seems like, you know, DPW, we rely on them a lot. But they're kind of like the last, the last people on the list to get any kind of updated equipment and money and stuff like that. And I realize what you're saying. That it's probably going to be tight this year, but right after we got sworn in, I took a tour of a lot of places, DPW, Crandall House, that, talked to some people, took a look at this, took a look at that. Some of the equipment we have at DPW is, is, is pretty much at, at, at its age and its life expectancy. We have anything from 1997, 1997 pickups to two thousand, hold on, nineteen, nineteen seventies grader. You know, I realize that, you know, DPW, you know, it's one of those things where like I said, it's the last of two get something, but we need to do some kind of updates. Cause I'm looking at this, yeah, looking at the auto and maintenance pair, $26,000. You lose an engine in a truck, you know, the truck's worth fixing. That's half your capital budget or your R and M, if you would, repair and maintenance right there. So somewhere down the line, I'd like to see them, maybe we could filter in some new vehicles, maybe some more money to an extent. And I know we've talked about this. And you're saying where we get it? There's a lot of places we can get grants, you know? If you'd like to reach out to, I could reach out to Senator Morgan, maybe reach out to Brian Kennedy. Maybe get some statewide grants. If not, we can do a little of the R I D O T shopping there, government surplus, stuff like that. A lot of the places, some of the places will just do, uh, instead of you bidding on it, you can come in, say, hey, I'm in this county, blah, 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 and they go. And the understanding is, you know, we're not just going to go ahead and say, oh my God, there's a van, let's go get that. Then you realize you get it home, realize it needs a motor or something like that. But it would like to see these guys get some updated stuff. They've got a, they've got a bulldozer up there they would like to work on, but just at a ballpark figure, it's about $6,000. They get it all apart and with pieces and whatever parts made big.
Yes.
Yeah. DPW.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yep. DPW is, is a town's defense on a storm. If you're going to worry about, hey, is that truck going to make it through another snowstorm or are the floorboards going to fall out or we're going to have enough money to make it through? Yeah, that's get, that's kind of gets questionable. You know, I manage 3.8 million dollars worth of roll in stock. So you can pretty much, you know, where I go, as far as what I can see is hey, these guys could use some more money, some newer trucks. Now necessarily brand new, what we just, what we just put out for a brand new truck, power truck?
Yeah, we, we've purchased, uh, public works in the C, through the CIP. The last three previous budgets, we've purchased new vehicles for them. Um, and that's something that we want to continue to do. I've certainly agree with you a hundred percent that a lot of their equipment is, it is definitely old and aging and we need to definitely work on that fleet. And we've been trying to address that, um, the last few years. And then we meet with the department heads and and I, you know, Dave mentions, you know, goes through priority wise, what we need to update, what we need to replace. That, that's what we, how we have handled it. Um, this year, there wasn't anything as far as trucks going, um, on the, the annual goals or that we talked, the IP. Um, so I didn't put anything in there, but it, it's definitely on our list of things to address going forward. And we, we have tried to address it. Like I said, we got three new trucks on the previous, um, three budgets in the CIP. So we're, we're getting there and, and those trucks aren't cheap. But, and like you said, if there's grants, um, you know, I, I, I love grants. So if they're out there and we can apply for them, I'm all for it.
All right. Like I said, if you want, we can, we can likely even get together with Dave or get together with you and I can show you some of these brands or even talk to some people that have done them. Like I said, maybe we, we get, you know, the elected officials to maybe give us a hand. Yeah, I just want, you know, like I said, it comes down to where it comes down to, boils down to, you know, the readiness, being able to get out for a storm. You don't want to sit there and turn the key in a truck and find out it doesn't, you know, something, something doesn't work. You know, without dated equipment, when I first started with the company I'm now, we had stuff that was 20, 20 years old and you were lucky if it started every, if it started every morning and they got smart. Cause what happens when you start piecemealing stuff, when you start piecemealing stuff, it just, it just eats up your budget like this, but tomorrow. Yeah. Trust me, a lot of these truck parts I know for sure are not cheap. I can tell you that right now. But that's where I just, I know you're at with that. I know where Dave is at with that, just for the benefit of the rest of the council. You know, this is something, like I said, we, we can't always depend on them when there's a storm or this, but they're the last ones to get any kind of uh, uh, updated equipment or maybe a little bit more, uh, R and M money, repair maintenance.
Certainly. Yeah. And I, I've, you know, I, you can ask, uh, Dave and, and Tim prior to him. I, I definitely have, um, you know, tried to address that situation with, with the fleet and the aging fleet um, over, over the previous years and want to continue to do so. So I, I hear you. Um, I, I don't know if you're looking to do something this year. It, it wasn't suggested by, uh, department, the department had Dave at the time, so we didn't put anything in for this year. His top priority was the water system. So that's, that's what I, I wanted to address. I, I was hoping to get that done. And we, the next major purchase that we talked about was actually a generator for the public works department. Um, and I, I wanted to put that in and I worked with him um, over the last week or so, trying to get, you know, he got some quotes and we, it, it just, I just couldn't. I didn't want to, you know, I, there was already a tax rate increase and, um, you know, I asked him, can I, can I hold off till next year? And we thought, um, given, given the financial situation this year, that it would probably be best to fund that next year.
Yeah, I've been, Brian, please trust me when I say this. I'm not trying to get in your lane or Dave's lane or anything. I'm just giving a kind of a, of a, kind of a outlook on it like that. Yeah. I mean, this is, I don't know if we, something maybe we could do later on down the year, because nobody knows where we're going to be in six months, right?
Sure.
You know, we might still be, we might be walking around two masks on and a football helmet. Who knows? You know, don't mean to be sarcastic, but yeah, it's something, I mean, that's something, you know, I can, I can step to with you or maybe with Dave, we could all sit down and like I said, I could, you know, reach out to the people that I know and say, hey, what do you got sitting on your lot or something like that, somewhere down the road. But when I say down the road, I don't mean two years from now. Maybe there's something we could think about towards the summer, before we start going back up the hill to winter, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. Yeah. I think that's a great idea. I, I mean, we know, we know the fleet needs help. So any, anything you could do to, to help, that'd be great. Much appreciated.
All right. So back to my question. I guess I'll look at Dave when I say this. I got a phone call from, or I got an email from somebody. The vendor, the National Grid, cut down some trees and they left in these people's yard.
Can't hear you.
I said, I, I am, I'm Sharon, I'm talking to, uh, Director of DPW. I got a email from, from somebody that National Grid had cut down some trees. They're kind of on their property, kind of on their street and just kind of left it there. And they just left the trees there. The question is, is who is responsible when it's like that? Is it National Grid's responsibility to take the trees away? The homeowners or is it the towns?
We can't hear anything.
Why don't you ask him to come step up to the, sit at a mic?
Counselor is Dave Caswell, Director of Public Works. Uh, Counselor Gary, to answer your question, typically it's National Grid. When they contract their, uh, services out, it's up to their vendor to remove the wood. Uh, as Brian related to earlier, as I was walking in the door, that our contract with our vendor that the town used, it states in our contract that the town will remove the wood. Anything larger than 12 inch. And we have been doing that, um, when time permits, as everybody knows, we've been, uh, rather busy in our snow and ice removal operations, um, for the past, uh, yeah, a while, a while. Uh, excuse me, I've been going since four this morning because we were out sanding. Um, so yeah, typically, but I have a contact with the grid, so I, I will, um,
I'll, I'll circle back with the, circle back to person, circle back to you.
Certainly, certainly. We'll do whatever we can to assist the homeowner to get the wood removed.
Yeah. Don't get me wrong. I mean, I'm, I'm not begrudging that the trees are coming down. There, there's some that really need to come down. But just, you know, just, you know, a roadblock or somebody, somebody goes to plow and it's up against the side of the street or something like that. That's all. I just don't want to see them to get hurt. You know, I think anybody wants to look at huge bunch of logs sitting on the, on long track three oh hot there, A, you know, B, 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 that's all.
Steve?
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
I wanted to ask Dave, um, if we have $30,000 left in that special tree cutting fund, um, are they going, or is anyone going, going to go out and look at the next level of trees that need to be cut? And make a list?
Yes, Sharon, we, we've started that process. Uh, I've discussed it with the, uh, with Brian. And, uh, at a suitable time, as, as soon as time permits, uh, I'll provide him with a, a list of trees that we want to target next. And, um, I believe we can still use the, uh, vendor that we use because they're on the state NPA. Uh, I would just have to get a price from them for the targeted trees. The last project recently completed last week was 99 trees removed for $39,875, I believe. Uh, and as Brian stated, uh, there's approximately 30,000 left, um, for future projects.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director, when you say NPA.
The national price agreement, uh, the vendor that we used was, was on, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's a ma- master pricing agreement done by the state. Right. So the, the state, yeah, they, they take bids and they, they ensure that it's the lowest vendor price. You know, offered in the state and then they basically, we don't have to go through the RFP process if they're on the, the state NPA.
Okay.
Cause it, cause we know we're getting a good, good rate.
Yeah, I just thought some, some of us don't, some of us may, some of us may not know some of the acronyms. I know I have a tendency to spit them out like R and M. Repair maintenance, everybody's like, what's R and M? So just, uh, give the director a little bit of a, a nudge in the ridge.
All right. So you guys, uh, if we move, or, or else you guys had other questions for Dave. Um, you will move to public works revenue. Um, and generally this is just a pass through. Uh, we do have a miscellaneous revenue, which is a very small line item. Sometimes they'll have some scrap metal from, uh, old equipment that they'll, they'll sell and they'll get some money, but it's, it's very miniscule amount. Um, and it's not very predictable. We don't really know when we're going to get it. Uh, other than that, it's, it's all pass through revenue. These are, um, expenses that come in, but we, we recoup them. So they show up in the expense line. But we collect the revenue from various, um, agencies like the Ashway Fire, Ashway Ambulance, Richmond, Carolina Fire District. They get fuel from public works. Um, it shows up as an expense for us because we're paying for the fuel, but then we recoup those costs. So any questions on that? All right. So the next line item, the last for public works is the landfill expense. Uh, this is something, we have a contract with Westerly that expires at the end of this fiscal year. And, uh, previously the, the previous town manager has worked with the town manager of Westerly and, um, to, you know, it, it, it's a good situation for Hopkinton. Um, there's been a, a lot of talk statewide about tipping fees and they're just keep going up and up. Um, so we have a, a great relationship with Wesley and they're allowing us and our, our residents to use their landfill. And, um, generally it's going up a thousand dollars a year. So I budgeted for a thousand dollar increase. Uh, but until the end of the fiscal year or, or, you know, that, we'll, we'll reengage with Westerly and try to get another three-year contract in place.
It's a, it's a very good, uh, thing for the town of Hopkinton. Many years ago, I actually toured the, uh, the landfill in Johnston and went on, on the top of the site and saw how they, uh, do things and what is recyclable. It's quite an operation. So, uh, it would be, uh, worth a trip. I don't know what tech tours are, but it's really an interesting operation. Uh, in, in recycling and, uh, many other things.
Brian, uh, Councilor Moffett here. Um, now what does our contract with this, uh, landfill with, uh, with, with Wesley entail? What's his, what's the details on? Cause you said residence. So I wasn't sure what you meant by that.
I, I actually have the contract in front of me, um, and I can provide that to you or to the, to the council. Um, we, and it's something that the previous town manager would negotiate.
Sure.
I'm, I'm not all that familiar with it because from a finance perspective, I, you know, I never really got involved with the negotiations. I would just, um, you know, I, from a budgeting, I, I collect the contract and review it for budgeting purposes.
Sure. No, I, I, I wasn't just, um, I was just, I just wasn't sure if that was a contract to allow that, you know, the residents of Hopkinton to actually go to the dump and use it and, and stuff like that. So it's just kind of like a, a membership per se.
Yeah, that's, that is my understanding that, that the Hopkinton residents are allowed to use the Wesley landfill as Hopkinton residents.
I can stop using my, uh, my father-in-law's address then.
Hey, Brian, off the top of your head, I know this is an off subject, but what does Wesley take in? I'm sure you know this because you're a numbers guy. What does Wesley take in on recyclables here?
I, I'm sorry. I could, I, could you say that a little bit louder?
I said, this is an off the, off the cuff question, but you're a numbers guy. I know you always look at numbers. What does Wesley take in for recyclables yearly?
For, for recyclables?
Yeah, cans, bottles.
Their revenue, because they're, they're selling that back. So
Oh, oh.
If you know kind of revenue they made off of.
I don't, I, I don't know that. Um, if it's public information, um, I, I made a note and I'll generally if, if there's questions I can't answer like this, I'll go research and get back to you guys and write an email or put together a memo and answer. Um, so that's something I'm going to probably have to do a little homework on.
And Brian, you could probably go to their website, the Westerly landfill website, and they'll have what they charge.
Okay. I'll, I'll look into that for you, Mike.
You'd be surprised at that number.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right. So moving on, um, if you guys are all set. Oh, actually I think Joe has his hand up. Do we want to ask him while we still have Dave here in case it's public works related?
Sure, we can do that. Uh, Joe, Joe Moreau, uh, you have the floor.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau from Old Depot Road. Uh, I mentioned this Monday and I'm not sure, you know, if David was listening with his work schedule. But I, again, I wanted to thank him personally, uh, for the job that they've done the last few snowstorm as well as the staff. And I also realized looking for some other information and I didn't really get this from David, but he's also down two employees on workers comp. So that's made it even more difficult. I was talking with one of the DPW workers, uh, the other day at Cumberland Farms. And he was telling me in the last storm, he put 300 miles on his truck. And that was just for one storm. So to Mike's point, they really do, the equipment really does get abused. Um, if you look at the brush cutter that the town has, uh, and the shape that that thing is in, I mean, I'm surprised, uh, it still runs. And I know it's been down from time to time because that also takes a lot of abuse. The last thing I want to mention is, uh, we had a rep the other day from ABC that came into the yard and gave me a brochure. And he explained to me that they're going to be doing some tree work that's hanging over the wires. And what he explained to me and what's in the brochure is, and I don't And what he explained to me and what's in the brochure is, and I don't recall if it was six inches or eight inches in diameter, anything larger than that, they were gonna leave on the side of the road. But it was nice that he at least gave us a heads up on on what was gonna uh take place out there. But uh, also, thank you, Brian, for uh going through a difficult time to do this budget. Thanks.
No problem.
I would like to say, you know, uh, being in my eighth council term, and I spent four years on former finance board town. The two biggest components of the Hopkin and general government is the police department and the public work. And, you know, with people wanting to keep taxes in check, usually it's the public works department that often, it's not always takes the hit for uh keeping taxes low, so. Because if you look at the town budget compared to the Charahoe budget, the town budget is very small. And the biggest components of the town budget is the police department and the public work, so if if people are pressuring the town council to to make some cuts, you know, the public works department uh is a very like the most obvious target. Probably a terrible thing to say, but it's just my observation being involved in town government politics for many years and now, thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks, Dave. Um, if you want to stick around, if I, we're gonna move on to uh the clerk's department, the town clerk. Gotta really watch this Lisa.
Oh, thank you for your.
So I I think it's, what page, does anyone know the the page number, it's?
Seven.
Seven, okay. All right, so if there's any questions on on that payroll tab, I'll give you guys a second to get there. All right, so any questions on the payroll section?
I have a question about the border canvassers. Does that include the poll workers or not?
It it doesn't. On that page, the following page, we'll get there though. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so uh the next page, if we move on to the town clerk, um, compensation and salaries. It's probably, um, just as a general townwide note, um, while I'm thinking of it, the health insurance. Um, they're projecting, right now I have a a six percent increase on health and a three percent on dental. Um, and the the way this works is it, the the trust who we get our, is our insurance provider. Uh, it's actually Blue Cross Blue Shield, intent to Delta Dental, but the trust negotiates rates on our behalf. Um, and we, they pool our rates with with other towns, Richmond and Charleston specifically, and on a state level. So it keeps our rates down, um, by, you know, strength in numbers. Um, they're projecting six percent on health and three percent. And what happens is, in the budget process, it's pretty early when we're setting our budget um for them, they don't really know what the rates are gonna be, they're currently working on those rates, so they they give me a range. Um, you know, I'll I'll touch base with my contacts there and say, you know, what do you anticipate for workers' comp, what do you anticipate for health? For for next year, they give me, they give me a range from six to ten percent, and I I put the low figure of six percent in. So just so you guys know. Um, hopefully, hopefully, when the, as we go through this budget process, probably, you know, sometime in March, they'll they'll tell us our actual rates, and at that point in time, I'll put them in to the budget and and give you guys an updated budget once they're they're solidified, but again, at this point, we're just going on their estimate for next year. So, um, on that same note, um, the MERS, the pension rate is, that's dictated by the state. So the state has actuaries that go through every year and they determine how much the the municipality's pension is funded. And they determine our contributions for the upcoming year. Um, and this year, um, our rates went down, last year they were three point seven three percent, they went down to two point nine eight percent. Um, so that's a, that's a nice, that that's helped offset those health uh health insurance rates uh increase. It's kind of offset that a little bit, um, so that that was some good news that we did receive this year was on that pension rates. So, any any questions on that top section?
Brian, this is Bob, can you explain the three items under the health dental insurance? There's the insurance, the co-share and the buyback, I just, I'm curious what those are.
Sure, so the health insurance, uh, health and dental insurance line is the cost to the town for the total health insurance. In the union contracts, we have co-shares, so the uh currently, for this particular union, uh, the town pays seventy eight percent and the employee pays twenty two percent. So, so every year when we have the negotiations come up, that's one of the things we negotiate. And at this point, the employee, so that co-share's their portion that offsets the town's expense. Um, and then that that third line is the a buyback. So in the union contracts, we also offer a buyback, so if they go on their spouse's plan or another health plan other than the town's, we give them a stipend of thirty five hundred dollars, and and that does vary slightly by contract. Um, but but it's an incentive for them to to take coverage elsewhere if if it's suitable for them.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so advertising? Okay, um, services?
So is Lisa, are the poll workers in the contract services line?
No, they're on the next page, we'll get there.
All right, all right, all right.
Yep.
Okay.
I would ask Lisa, uh, on legal advertising, uh, how much is uh a pass through by the applicant for certain things and how many? How much would you say illegal advertising may be as election notices that wouldn't be a pass through, you know?
I can't, I didn't hear what you asked.
Scott Billhurst. I now expect you to tell me the exact number, but I know some advertising would be legal advertising like for an election, but there are some advertising that you have to do uh for applicants that would be a pass through because they have to reimburse you for the advertising.
Okay, I think I understand what you're asking, um, so, for instance, if it was somebody who wanted to apply to the town to um change his own, is that what you mean? And how much it would cost, so, okay, so that would cost, it generally costs, in that instance, it's a three time advertising requirement, and it generally costs between eight hundred and a thousand dollars. And um I've recouped all but from one applicant for those expenses, and then there are election expenses on the, under the second page. We are required by law to to do certain advertisements that that include elections and border canvassing. What doesn't get covered under the elections and border canvassing gets covered by the legal advertising on the town clerk's page. And uh there are also warrants that have to be posted for um various things such as all of the um warrants warning people of uh budget referendums for Charahoe, budget referendums for Hopkin. And typically, what's on those two pages, the, on the two pages for those line items under elections and border canvassers, it doesn't cover it all, it's, advertising is very expensive. If we advertise for for help wanted ads in the Westerly Sun or in um the Charahoe Times and their affiliated papers, it's very reasonable. But once you jump to the Providence Journal, and sometimes you have to go to the Providence Journal to get proper coverage, it triples the cost of advertising. So you'll see that that line item, we pushed up, I think by a thousand dollars this year.
And I think it's safe to say, Lisa, we've, we've actually had um a few new employees over the last year or two. Um, we we've had to fill quite a few positions, so that's, that's why that money's can can spend.
Yeah, yeah, and we we would, there are a couple of instances where we were looking for a a particular person, person personnel. And we advertised in the lower cost publications a couple, multiple times, and then we had to kick it to the Providence Journal to get the proper coverage and finally secure somebody, so.
It's understandable, you know, it's it's cost of doing business, but yeah, it is, it's advertising is insane.
Oh, this is Bob, the, when you do advertising for job positions, do you ever do any online? So like, uh, you know, the monster dot com or Indeed or any of those to the, do you do, do you do those?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, such as, some of the newspapers automatically do it in their their own online, but we have uh uh also done Monster and one of the other ones, I think Providence Journal.
Oh, ZipRecruiter, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so sometimes it's good and bad, ZipRecruiter, unfortunately, it doesn't target necessarily the area. So you're getting an applicant from across the country that has no knowledge about what the town of Hopkin does, so, I mean, it's good and bad.
Okay, so uh services, next section, uh, actually, no, I'm sorry, we just do the services. But a- any questions on services, um, if not, supplies, maintenance and operation? Okay, um, and then town clerk revenue? Okay, so I think that brings you guys to the next page, uh, which is probate. Board of canvassers and elections, so we'll just start with probate, are there any questions on probate? Okay, any questions on board of canvassers, Sharon? Oh, I thought, or elections, I'm sorry.
Elections would be, I think, what she's, what she's looking for for the election wages for poll, for poll workers.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so uh board of canvassers? All set, um, elections?
Sharon, is that what you wanted to ask about the poll workers?
That's what it was, I just, yeah, I just wanted to know where they were, thank you.
They're there, we were able to reduce that a little bit because um we do not have the same amount of elections for next year, we'll have the Charahoe Budget Referendum in twenty twenty two and the Hopkin Town Budget Referendum in twenty twenty two, we never know what the state is gonna throw at us. Um, for instance, we're having on March second, we're having a statewide referendum that none of us anticipated, so thankfully, the Secretary of State's office has provided a two thousand dollar grant to have offset and defray the cost of it. But at any given time, we could, you know, we could not be in that same sort of situation, we were very, very grateful for that. Um, so we did, we were, yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just, I just heard that um, that the Charahoe School Committee voted to go forward with investigating tearing down all four schools and building a new one. And when we talked about the the next steps, when they came to the town council meeting the other day, um, eventually, it's gonna have to go to the public to vote.
Yeah.
Whether they want that, right?
Yes, usually they go for a, either, they try to hit the the target, the the regular election cycle because that's when you get the best coverage, so I'm going to, and maybe suggest that that is what they'll do, but they could ask for a special referendum, so that's another expense, we only get for um reimbursement, we are supposed to get fifteen hundred dollars reimbursement from Charahoe for, to to defray the cost of the budget referendum in April, last year we did not receive that, I requested it, we did not receive it. Uh, I don't know why, um.
They have the money in store.
I know they do, but we didn't get it.
Well, maybe it was changing in the administration and the director of finance, so maybe we should have have Steve send a le- send a letter.
I.
One of the two.
I've I've already.
I mentioned it to Brian, yeah.
Yeah, I've I've already spoken, no, I'm sorry, it's uh hard with the the Zoom meetings, I I don't mean to talk over anyone. Um, I just wanted to to let you guys know that I did reach out to the finance director at Charahoe and he's looking into that. So, I should, should hear something back, um, I would hope, um, if not tomorrow, but early next week.
No.
One other thing I would like to mention also, we um, because every ten years we go through a census and every ten years potentially, we could have population shift. And uh ten years ago, we we had, we had uh a population shift that pushed a section of our voter uh population up into a special, small, little, it's precinct one four oh three. It's a small precinct that's covered by a different state representative. And we had to do, shift the populations around, we had to come up with a place to hold an election, first it was at the Saint Joseph Church Hall, now it's at the Hope Valley Grange because they were able to, uh, after the twenty ten floods where it it was damaged, they, it was renovated, it's a great little place to have an election and they've been very open and uh welcoming to us to do that. But twenty twenty census has completed in March, I'm, we are supposed to be meeting, on a Zoom meeting with um elections officials and the mapping people through the state agency and we will find out if there's going to be any changes to that, so we would have to keep in mind, if there are changes, then that would be an expense that we may have to shift around in that budget, so, but I think there's a little bit of money there. But it's too early for me to say anything other than to report out what I'm reporting because I don't know any facts and figures and I won't until early March.
Thank you, Lisa, I think Scott has something to say.
Yeah, I I remember what I wanted to say, but the the bottom line is that uh you know, I'm a little concerned sometimes that people don't understand, the elementary schools in Charahoe are owned by the town. And they're rented from Charahoe School District, so whether they get torn down or not is, is not Charahoe's affair, they are legally required to maintain those buildings. And the town can do what they choose to because it's town property that's given or rented to Charahoe School District for like two dollars a year or a dollar, I think it's two dollars, but whatever it is. Uh, the thing is, as far as redistricting, uh, there's a political element to it that a lot of people don't like to talk about, and lines can be moved around. In fact, the last time I spoke in Franklin Delphi was with me, the bottom of the state house. And we went through that, and there's some coverage in, I know the Charahoe Times at that time, so we'll see how that shakes out, but uh uh, I do thank Lisa for all of what she does, and it'll be interesting how it shakes out, thank you.
Hey Brian, not to get off the subject, I know, I, or, where are we left off? Brian, let's get off the subject and you might not, you might, you should have this answer, what's it cost to run the? Nineteen oh four, the nineteen twelve, what's it take a year to operate? I know, I know there's no electricity in.
Well, there is, there is, that's the only expense we have right now is electricity because we were required to put a smoke system in, a smoke CO system, that actually cost the town um, oh man, we're going back like five years now, I want to say it was like fourteen thousand dollars that we had to pay to put a smoke system into a building um that was getting torn down, but we had to because of the other school, elementary school right next to it.
Yeah.
Um, and for the safety of everybody and the kids, we 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 had to fund a new smoke system, so right now, it's about, and this is actually, will come up in general government, but it's roughly about, I think it's like around six hundred to seven hundred dollars a year in electricity.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it says on that line item.
Yeah.
It's the next one, town council page, is that what we're?
Yep, town council. Yep, Town Council, yep. All right, so page one is the stipends.
Hold on, I gotta flip one more page.
Okay.
Where are you?
Town Council.
Forty-five.
Page what?
Forty-five.
We have page one.
All right, so any questions on stipends?
Just, just gonna bring up my pet peeves. This town hasn't had, the, the Town Council hasn't had a raise in like 11 or 12 years. And I think that, that we generally, I guess people look more favorably on it, on making a change in the years that you're going off. So that you're not, you know, you're not helping yourself, that you're helping the next council. Is that, is that the way it usually goes, even though we voted not to do that last year? But is that, I don't know, Lisa, have you been around? Were you around before when we finally did get a raise?
There was a couple of years back, it doesn't, you know, it's so long ago now. It's not even showing up in the previous years. But there was an increase, but I can't recall the exact details of how it came about, but I think it was probably well needed and it may be well needed now. But I think that you have to be careful. I, I don't recall if there was an ethical problem with how that was being presented. That more research would have to be done with that. I'm, I'm not certain why it was frowned upon. But I, I thought there was something that was not, I don't know if it was a political thing or is, I think it was, there was something, some sort of rule. I don't know, though. I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but there was something that they, there was some reason that it couldn't be increased. But, but what, I'll be damned if I can remember what it is.
Sure, Scott, Scott might be able to refresh our memory.
Well, years ago, when we had the town meeting format, I remember because I spoke against it and they doubled the county's stipend. And really at that time, I said it was an honor to be on the council, which it is. But the problem is that through the years, depending upon who you serve with, you know, some people take being on the town council very seriously. And we've actually had a few council people, I've noticed over the years, you're lucky to get them to show up at a meeting, let alone do anything. So that's the bad part, that somebody that actually does something gets compensated and some people that you're lucky to get, show up, gets the same amount of money. But I do believe that the town council should get more money. And you can always check with the solicitor and I don't think this is the appropriate year to do that. But I think that what we have to bear in mind is, I know in the town of Richmond, at least once, and I think maybe the last election, I'm not sure, they didn't have enough candidates between the two parties and independents to, to actually get, come up with five people. The last election, because of the solar issues, a lot more people were interested in running for the council. The previous election in was that we just had five people run, which was highly unusual in Hopkins. A lot of times we have six people run or maybe seven. And the problem is someday Hopkins is going to be faked. I know solar is a very hot item and things like that, but when everything calms down, we might go or have the situation that Richmond has had, where you don't have enough candidates for town council. And that's something that could happen. So it's a small amount of money and I think that it should be increased. What that amount is, is debatable certainly, but I think it needs to be looked at because the town council, nobody else can act for the town council. Only five people can act for the town council is, because that's how many seats, nobody else can substitute for us. We don't have alternates or anything like that. So it's something that we really have to deal with. Thank you.
Steve, could I speak quick?
Absolutely, go ahead.
It could be that this is not your final o- option of addressing the, the town council budget either. Even though you're going through your budget workshops, there will be opportunity to address it at another workshop if more information was needed. And even if we finish the budget workshops, that's not the end of planning the budget. So you still have more time to do that if, if it's amenable and that there's nothing that prevents it from being put in and increased. Then, you know, you can still do that. One other thing I would take in, in consideration when dealing with an increase is just to review what like towns get. And so you have a better idea of, of what it is that you're looking for in a similar sized town.
And I have a, a document here from last year, because this was a pretty hot topic last year that I could share with you guys. But I don't know if everybody has access to a screen right now. Or what maybe is best to do is that I'll provide this with your, your next package. And then you guys can review the document and then we can put it on a later date on maybe our last workshop. Any, any outstanding items such as this, we can address at the last workshop.
That works for me.
Sounds good, Brian. Hey, before we step off the subject, just food for thought here. I know it's the towns a little bit bigger, but Wesley is quite conservatively on the stipends than we are. Even though they have, what, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Can't hear you.
Turn your phone up. I said
All right. Okay, what's up now? Go ahead.
All right, you ready? All right.
I'm ready.
Yeah.
All right. What I'm saying is just Wesley, even though it is a little bit bigger town, they have seven or eight counselors. Their, their stipend is, is considerably more than ours. But I realize that big, you know, kind of a different town, bigger tax structure, I'm just saying that's, that's, I don't know what Richmond gets.
Yeah.
So I
In frontage on the ocean.
Yeah.
I can tell you that Richmond gets, their budget line item for their council members is $6,500. And Charleston's is $18,000. And we're at $12,175.
I'm good, thanks. Sharon, did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard, I heard it.
And again, I'll I'll provide a supporting document for that.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you.
Brian, do you have that, that thing that has the history too?
Yeah.
Okay, let him see. We haven't had an increase since '06 and actually got a decrease. You know, in, 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 in 2011, we went down by a hundred bucks.
You mentioned, Sharon, you, yes, and you mentioned 2006, which, which rings a bell with me because I believe 2006 is when they changed the charter and put the all-day referendum in there. So the, everything changed in regards to how the budget is done. Prior to that, it was, there was a financial town meeting usually held in May and you would have to have a quorum of voters present. You'd have your full council, you'd have your town moderator, you'd have your town sergeant calling for votes and people could make motions from the floor and vote on them. And that may be, so prior to 2006, that may be how it was done before that with a motion and a second and a, and a positive vote on, from the floor.
That's definitely looking at these numbers. That's, that's definitely way overdue.
Yeah, but I'm, thank you, Brian, for just showing them what it's gonna, what it, what the history is, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. So I, I think that's, I'll provide this document. I'll go back and double check the numbers and update it for the current fiscal year. And I'll provide that in the next package and, and then we'll, we'll address that at the last workshop.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So with that being said, do you guys have any questions on the town council budget other than the stipends? Okay. All right. So moving on, general government.
Brian, what's the contingency? What's that?
Oh yeah, no problem. So the contingency is just, it's, it's actually the only contingency account we have in our budget. It really is kind of like a catch-all. I've seen it, they upped it in year, well, I guess it's a few years now. The last council wanted to buy iPads for the council. And we never actually did do that, but there's money in there for that. It also in years past has been used for things that come up during council meetings. We had a resident who had a drainage issue, so the council offered to have an engineer look at it. Certain things that just pop up. Because we don't, you know, if, if the council decides to do something like that, it, then the question becomes, okay, now who's gonna eat this expense? You know, where do we put it? So we decided to make this line item so that the council has a little bit of money set aside to, to do certain things.
They wanted to have a big hot dog cook out and have some people have a hot dog or a hamburger or something.
I was thinking, put a sauna in the, the council chamber.
Just saying, I mean, you can put an ice cream truck out here and have ice cream day for everybody in town.
So this is kind of Brian's
Or a Dells truck, you know, you could have everybody come get a complimentary Dells or something.
We'll get, we'll get that, we'll get that taco wagon, it suits the village liquors. Dude, that's Brian, this kind of, kind of falls on iPads. Trust me, the last one needs another, needs an electronic device, but I'm surprised cell phones for the council and department heads and say Lisa or something like that never came up.
Yes, certainly it has not come up in, in my time. And, and the iPad time was, you know, pre-COVID, when the council members all sat at the table. And they, you know, they'd have stacks of documents as opposed to just having a PDF in front of them. So it, it kind of made sense at the time, but you know, since COVID happened, you know, now every, everybody's on a laptop in order to attend a meeting virtually. So, you know, different times, different needs, but certainly, you know, that's up to the council if that's something they want to use that money for. Again, that, that's what it's there for. It's, it's at your discretion.
Didn't we buy new chairs at one point?
I'm sorry?
New chairs, yes.
We bought
Yeah, a few years ago.
Yeah.
A few years ago.
And, you know, just thinking outside the box here, if you guys, at, at some point, whether it's this year or next year, decided that you wanted to increase the stipends, you know, that without having to affect the taxpayers, you could maybe lower that and then allocate those funds up to the stipend line. Which might, which might, might be an option as opposed to, you know, that, that way the, the bottom line budget isn't being moved. And, you know, might might be a better way to go about it.
Right. Go ahead, Scott, and then I have a hand raised.
Well, Councilman Hurst, the problem with that is contingency is unexpected expense. And it probably should be more than $4,000 because you don't know what areas, some, some things can be very expensive and $4,000 isn't going to do that. It's just there is like a type of insurance case you have a problem. And I think it's probably best not to use the contingency to increase the wages of, of the town council because you can't predict what can happen in years' time. The council has to use good judgment in spending the contingency. But it probably should be more than $4,000 because you never know. There could be a piece of equipment or something happens you, you want to get and it might not be covered by thing in the budget. So.
Brian?
Yes.
Didn't we use that $4,000 last time to just put it back in the general coffers?
We, we did use it last year. Yep.
To put it in the general coffers?
I'm sorry?
Just to put it back in the general coffers?
Nope, it, it was actually spent last year. On, on what, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I could, I could, FYI, I'll make a note to find out what, but the $4,000 was spent. This year, nothing's been spent to date in, in the current fiscal year. And I, now that I, I'm thinking, and Lisa, she's got the, the memory of an elephant, so she might be able to help me. I think it used to be used for like the Washington County Fair. I think they would do something every year for like, or some parade or some.
There was, yeah. Yeah, there was a, there used to be a line item in there for the Gordon Green Post Parade or, or so we would donate that fund, but I think it was only $500. But last year, I think in April, the council approved expenditure of about $2,000 to put the new air conditioning in the meeting room. So that's part of it.
Okay.
Brian, this is real quick. That town contingency item, does that money, if it's not spent, it doesn't, it doesn't go anywhere, right? That, it doesn't go into an account. It just, it's just not spent.
Correct. So as a whole, when the, when a budget line item is not spent, it goes into the general funds. So if we underspend a budget line item of $4,000 and we spend $2,000, that, the remaining $2,000 goes back, you know, aggregate, obviously, to the bottom line budget. But whatever's unspent at the end year, that's, that's generally where we'd get a surplus. And that's, that's where we would get some money going back in to fund balance first, coming out on a deficit year. So to answer your question, yeah, it, it would go back into, to fund balance. The only time we'd, unspent funds would go in to a restricted account is if we did a warrant item. So we'll probably get into that a little bit more because we have to fund legal fees. We have a restricted account for legal fees and it's actually negative right now. I'm not really sure how that happened, but we, we definitely need to get, because we have the five union negotiations. So we, we have to have some money set aside. So in, in the past, we, we basically say, okay, if we're not going to spend all of salt and sand or if we're not going to spend all of this overtime budget, whatever's unspent is going to get transferred and then the voters vote on that at, on a warrant item.
Okay.
And if they approve it, that's set up. But there have been times when they've rejected it also.
Thank you. Hold on, just, just a second here. Joe has his hand up. Joe, go ahead.
Hi, Joe Morel from Old Depot Road. I supported at the last three budgeting workshops and an increase for our town council members. I, I do believe that they're underpaid for the amount of work that they've been doing and we certainly appreciate that. But in my new position now, and I've been dealing with three people. And when you look at the three people and what they're going through, just to put food on their table, just to get heating assistance, I don't think during this COVID pandemic that we should be looking at something like that to increase the town council's pay. I think we also spent some money out of that contingency fund on speakers. I know for a while we had a difficult time at the, at the middle school and even the town council chambers. And I believe that we did buy some additional speakers. Just a suggestion, I've mentioned this to Brian and to Steve Moffett. Initially, I was trying to do it in May, but that's not going to happen. And it ties in with what Steve just said. I had planned on raising money or donating money myself to have a employee appreciation day. And I never thought about the idea of, you know, Dells Lemonade or whatever else we do. But if we could get, take some of that money, obviously it doesn't have to be a lot of it, but if we could take some of that and maybe use it as matching grants, but I think that, I hadn't thought about it, so you just started talking about the contingency fund. And I just think it's important to show our residents during a difficult time, we appreciate our first responders, we appreciate our town employees. Instead of, oh, did you hear the town council got a $400 raise? You know, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay, so if you guys are all set with that, maybe we should move to general government.
Page five.
Okay. All right, so first section, health. I'll just start by just giving you guys a quick background on the unemployment expense. We've generally have not had unemployment expenses. There's two options to pay. We can either pay in, which is 1.3% of all salaries of payroll into the state unemployment, or you can use a reimbursement method. The reimbursement method basically means the state pays and we have to pay when someone does collect unemployment. So at the 1.3% of all wages, we'd be paying much more than we have by doing the reimbursement method historically. And because of COVID, we actually had, we had laid off two recreation employees, and that's why we're seeing those expenses. But other than that, and then in nineteen, I believe it was, it was an employee that was let go, was collecting unemployment. So, but, you know, between, other than those two years, we really haven't seen any unemployment expenses come in. And it's much more affordable to do the reimbursement method for us than it would be to pay in every pay period, 1.3% of wages. So that's just a little background there. Any questions on health?
Brian, just a general question on this, this section, general government. This covers any, any sections of town that's not covered under the other sections. Is that right?
Correct. So this is, what this is, is this is Cobra. So when we have an employee either leave the town, they are covered under Cobra, so it's 100% recoupable. Like, we get reimbursed, the employee pays 100%, but we have to pay, we paid out through our health insurance bill. And then we also have employees for, one of the fire departments that we had an agreement with a long time ago that they're allowed to be under our health insurance, but they have to pay 100% of the premium. So we, we cover them under a similar arrangement.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so services, any questions on services? Okay, building and operations?
Hey, Brian, for the benefit of, or maybe Steve, I sapped through most of them. But for the benefit for us newer members, can you kind of walk us through the LED lights and the streetlights and how that work? National Grid pays for the pole, we pay for light. I'm not sure how that ever potentially hold out. This is what, two ounces.
Yeah, so, so I'm glad you brought that up because it's definitely worth mentioning. The, the history and what the current state. So the streetlights, the town, it was a statewide initiative. There was a law passed in 2015 that allowed municipalities to purchase their streetlights. And Hopkinton, along with several other municipalities, went out. We secured a loan through the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, which gives very low interest loans to nonprofits, municipalities for certain infrastructure type projects. So the town, it was a $253,000 loan we took out in 2015, which paid for us to purchase our streetlights from National Grid, update them to LED lights and put dimmers and timers on them so we could actually control them. So this, the line item that is streetlight, streetlights is the actual electric bill for the streetlights and below that, streetlight maintenance. Those two lines combined before we purchased them were $72,000 a year. So we've, we reduced our costs quite a bit. I mean, right now, we're at like twenty, a little over 23,000. So, so it was a good project for the town. And once we get that loan paid off, which I believe there's three years left on, it'll be even more profitable. We will get rid of that payment and debt services. But right now, when we converted over, we, we get our electricity through a statewide program called the REAP program. And what it does is the state, the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns goes out and they basically solicit bids for, for electric suppliers. So the electric suppliers will say, okay, this is, if all these cities and towns are going to get us, obviously, again, strengthen numbers, so it's, we sell a much higher volume to the supplier and we all get a favorable rate. So we've participated in that REAP program for several years now. And it's really been beneficial for the town to get, get much lower rates. We're currently, we just got a new contract with Constellation. It was previously Direct Energy. And when we did that, something happened in National Grid where they just stopped billing us for our streetlight electric bills. So I've emailed them on several occasions, and I've actually just recently started working with Paul Stuzak or Stuziak from National Grid. Sorry if I didn't get his name right, but he is actually working on resolving this issue right now. But I've contacted them by email and by phone over the years, the last two years, to try to resolve this issue. And hopefully it will be resolved soon. My fear is that, you know, I could have just bit my tongue and kind of just, you know, waited till they figured it out. But my concern is that we're going to get, someday they're going to figure it out and say, hey, you guys owe us 30 grand because you haven't paid your bill in two years. So I'm trying to get ahead of it and, and get, work with them so that they can get this resolved and we can start getting our, our electric bills paid. And then the, the streetlight maintenance, once we purchase them, National Grid no longer maintains the streetlights. They still get a small fee for the delivery. But our, our electric bill is actually getting paid through Constellation now. The maintenance is done by a company called Prism. They charge us $783.11 per month for the maintenance. And ironically, they also had a billing situation where they weren't billing us for a while. And I've worked with Tom Getz, who's a former council member in Charlestown. He's actually, he works for Prism now, and he's actually resolved that issue. So we're, we're getting billed monthly now from them as well.
Yeah, I just remember it was a long, drawn-out process, going through the LED, going through those lights. But thanks, Brian.
Yep. Okay, any questions on building and operations? That's that $650. Councilman Geary, that's the 1904 building electricity.
Just quickly, the insurance, property and casualty, is that like, that's, is that insurance townwide? Or is that just for?
Correct, correct. Yep. And we actually, you'll see a little bit of a bump. That's because when we purchased our streetlights, we had to increase our general liability by five million in order to purchase the streetlights. So we had to increase our, our property and casualty policy. And that's why we saw an increase in premium a couple of years back. And again, it wasn't reflected in FY20 because in FY20, the budget didn't pass. So had, had it passed, we probably would have seen the increase that year, but it didn't really come into fruition until FY21. So now, they're projecting for this year a 3% increase from the current year premium, and that's where you see that increase for the current year. All right, so next, next section, legal fees. Any questions on legal fees?
Yeah, Brian, the bottom one, five, the transfer to restricted fund B and grant.
Yep, so that was the Langworthy Field Project. It was a DEM grant that Jim Lamphier worked on for quite some time and Mary Sawyer from the Rec Department, which they did a beautiful project over there at Langworthy Field. And I want to say it was close to like $2 million, the total project. And it was funded by DEM Grant and CDBG Grants. And the, at the end of the day, we were able to get all but $16,607 covered by that DEM grant. So the only, the only, you know, the town had to basically finish the match off. What he did was, he was taking the 80/20, 80/20 match and matching it with CDBG funds. So the 20% the town owed for the DEM grant, he was using CDBG funds for that 20% as the town's match. And we ran out of CDBG funds. So the town had to pick up a small portion at the end, which was not planned. We thought we were going to have the whole thing covered. But at the end of the day, there was, you know, a billing mix-up and, you know, there's a little bit more of a story that Jim could probably explain. But we ended up covering the 16,000 and it had to come out of our operating budget somewhere. So I just put a new line item in there to make it completely transparent so that people would see it. I didn't want to just stick it in another line item where it didn't belong.
Works for me, bro. Thanks, Brian.
Yep. All right, so now revenue, any questions on revenue? Okay, and just a note here is that the revenue for the state, so there's three, I'm sorry, there's four items there in the middle. Public service, corporation tax, hotel meal tax, motor vehicle tax reimbursement and state aid to libraries. State aid to libraries is a pass-through. So we get that money and then we just pay it out to the state and you'll see it on the expense side as well. So that's dollar for dollar, a pass-through, a wash for the town. The other three items, I level funded them because I don't know what the state's going to do with, in the upcoming budget, what the governor is going to do. Hopefully, we'll know more as the budget process goes on. But for now, I, I've reached out to the Division of Municipal Finance, Department of Revenue to try to get some guidance. And I've been on conference calls with other finance directors because they all have the same question. But we've gotten no real feedback from the state as far as if they're going to go up or down. So at this point, I thought the safest thing to do would just be to level fund it. And then the, the impact fee is, that is, every new house that goes up, there's a 15, roughly $1,500 fee that is applied to land development that goes into a restricted account and per the town charter. And that's, the use is for, excuse me, expanding school facilities. So generally, what we do is every few years when that account gets built up, built up to $100,000 or so, we'll use that to supplement our revenue and our budget. So the council elected to do that last year. So now there's, you know, it's like every three or four years, it gets built up enough where we can use that as, as revenue in our operating budget and transfer it over. But because it was done last year, unfortunately, it's created a deficit this year, which is something that I'll go into much more detail as we go on about a couple other line items. Because I really think it's important for you guys to understand these one-time sources of revenue and how they affect the town. And what they do is essentially they build a structural deficit. And, you know, revenue is always a good thing, you know, but it can be dangerous because the next year, as you can see with this case, in this case here, you have a hole next year. So now you have $100,000 in revenue, $130,000 in revenue that you've lost. So you have to make that up, right? So that, that's a dangerous thing that we'll, we'll talk about going forward because there's, it's going to come up in building and zoning when you see the solar revenue. We have a couple, some solar revenue coming in this year. Same with the use of fund balance. Those are all one-time uses of, of revenue. And those can be very problematic the following year because you've already created a deficit for the next year. So just kind of give you a little bit of a background and we'll talk more about that when we get to building zoning. And then when we review the, the budget as a whole and the use of fund balance, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that again. But I think it's very, it's, it's not the easiest concept to grasp, but I think it's worth, worth talking about because, you know, again, next year, we don't want to get ourselves in a situation where we get a $500,000 increase from Charahoe. You know, we have salaries going up 2%, you know, health insurance goes up again or whatever the case may be. And then on top of that, you have to make up for a loss of $300,000 in revenue. Because now you've got yourself in a, in a real tough situation and you can see where we, we could easily meet our 4% tax increase cap. And that's what we want to avoid. We want to, you know, we want to avoid tax increases as much as we can, but when we do, we want them to be smooth. You know, we don't want to see big fluctuations in tax rates. You know, we'd like to kind of keep a, you know, if there's going to be an increase, keep them minimal and keep them consistent. I think that's, does a lot for the residents. You know, they, they don't want to see a decrease of $100 one year if they're going to get whacked with a $500 increase the next year. So that's just my, my two cents on that. But any other questions on, on revenue? Okay. All right, so next up, the CIP. What I'd like to do is, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Could I, could I interrupt quick? I noticed that we missed the boards and commissions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay. I just want to report quickly that I did reach out. The only person I heard back was from Harvey from the Conservation Commission. Everybody else has been level funded. So there's been no increase or decrease. And that includes zoning board, expenses and revenue, planning board, expenses and revenue, historic district commission, tax board of review, juvenile hearing board and conservation commission. And those are on the last, I don't know what pages they're on that you have. I have just those individual pages, but they're at the very end. Forty-nine, fifty, maybe?
Nine. Page nine.
Forty-seven, forty-seven is where it starts.
Okay.
Forty-seven, forty-eight and forty-nine.
Okay, so zoning board, any questions on zoning board?
Page, page forty-eight, Scott.
All right, any, any questions on zoning board? All right, and planning board, any questions on planning board? Tax border review. Conservation commission. Juvenile hearing board. And historic district commission.
Really, the only thing I would say, and I'm not advocating it now, but at some point you might want to plug in some money for the Committee on Aging. I don't know if it's going to take off. Plus, in a day of COVID, it's tough to recruit people, but I, I do want to get that going. And I don't know where that's going to go. It might not go anywhere. Because it's tough to get volunteers in town, but I suppose if we needed 50 bucks or something, we could ask the council to use that contingency fund. I'm just putting that out there, not advocating putting anything in now, but it could be down the road. I just thought to, hopefully we get by this COVID thing and I'll have to just seriously try to recruit people on my own to step up in place and do that.
All right, hold on, Joe's got another question. Go ahead, Joe.
Hi, I promise this is the last question that I have and I'll be damned if I can find it. But you mentioned in boards and commissions and under conservation commissions, there was a consulting fee of $3,000, I believe. And I was looking at it today. I just would like to know what does that entail? What is that $3,000 for?
That's generally, Lisa, did you want to answer that or?
No, go ahead.
Okay, it, it generally covers all of their expenses for, it, it's, it's used as far as specific line item and like the title, I don't think they really adhere to that specific, what is it called, consulting technical. It, it's basically their total allotment. That's what they use for all their projects. So it can be used for, for anything that the Conservation Commission needs in that particular year.
Okay, because it is on. Don't they do stream, stream water maintenance or testing in, in those? Really Harvey would be the one to ask, but he had a conflict, he had a Conservation Commission meeting this evening, so there was a conflict.
Yeah, because it's on page forty-nine and it does have a line item for dues and fees of $250. And it also has another line item for supplies of $250. So I was just questioning that, that's all.
I can.
Lisa, thank you. Lisa, thank you for the paperwork.
Oh, you're welcome.
And the root beer barrel candy, but don't tell anyone.
My pleasure.
Brian, this is Bob. On the juvenile hearing board, I see that last year it looks like there was nothing in the, in the budget on that line item. Is that because it was inactive?
Yeah.
We, we, we probably should consider maybe adding, adding something back in there.
I could reach out to the chief and ask him if there was any expense necessary. Because the, the only thing they used to do was like an annual summation report. They, they, if they needed any like copy paper and that, I would be happy to provide that. But they have not had an active meeting for a couple of years because any offenses that a juvenile or any trouble a juvenile might get into of late does, is not able to be handled locally.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make a note, yeah, we can, Lisa, and I will definitely circle back on that and make sure that, that there is money there if needed.
Okay. Yeah, I only mention that because now there's, there's at least some interest in people wanting to volunteer for that board.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I think, are you guys good with boards and commissions?
Yeah.
All right, let's take a look at the CIP. And what I'd like to do, if you guys are okay with it, is just go over the items in the CIP that are covered in that particular workshops. So, so that way, if we have like the police, we'll address that. We put it on every workshop agenda so that we can talk about it with the specific department head that it, that it's concerned. So we'll, we'll do, you know, the police will do when the chief's here. And IT will do when Chris, the IT director's there. But for today, since we covered general government, there's really one line item that is being funded. But I, I thought it'd be appropriate, especially for the new council members to kind of just give them a little bit of a background on the town, town hall consolidation, since that is one of the largest projects ongoing in the town. So I just, I left that on there just for information purposes. So that project, the last estimate we got, it was a $2 million project. As of the end of FY twenty, we, or the FY twenty-one, we had about 1.6 million funded and that was incrementally funded over the course of, oh, God, I guess maybe almost 10 years now. Maybe Lisa knows exactly, but I, I know it's been not funded on several occasions and incrementally funded on four or five different budgets, so.
That would be approximately, that's a good summation of that, yes. It's been a number of years and some years depending on if it was a good year and we didn't have a huge increase from the school budget, then the council found a little bit of wiggle room and they would fund that. They put it on as a warrant item in the past as well, but the last few years it's just been remaining as it is and there's been no additional funds committed to it.
And so there's a summary page that kind of breaks down. It gives a little bit more of an explanation, but I think, I think we just covered, you know, the meat and bones of it, you know, hasn't been funded in the last couple of budgets. We're not proposing to fund it this year, but perhaps next year if enrollment is down or we have a minimal increase by the school, that's generally when we like to take advantage and put something in there. Because at this point, we're, we're pretty close. You know, we, we maybe need like one or two more years of funding and then we could get that done. And, and, and maybe, maybe the council wants to entertain another option and that's fine. But I, we, we still would, would need the money to, to do something. Because I, I think we're kind of kicking the can down the road with that project. And, and I know people have various ideas about it. And, you know, whatever works best for the town, that's great. That's a council decision. But I, I'm just letting, wanted you guys to know that the money was there and that it's probably something that's going to need to be addressed at some point. Because, you know, the, the buildings, the Crandall House and the Fair House, they're, they're not very efficient. They're, they're in rough shape and the continuing maintenance on them is just getting worse and worse. Heating is an issue, heating and cooling, you know. So just, just wanted to get it on your radar and give you guys a little bit of a background.
You know, a council in, because I grew up in town, but sixty-seven years. But, you know, the thing that concerns me and I imagine it won't be happened, but it's a scenario that potentially could happen, that the town of Hopkins has to decide not only the old Actway School, but the so-called new Actway School was built in 1967 and also the whole Valley Schools depending upon where the Charahoe situation goes with the elementary schools. So I think that it's on the radar, a swing to some people in this town. We picked up on the potential of having three school buildings that aren't going to be used and where they're going to go. And obviously it's something we don't have to do right now because we don't, I suspect that we're not going to have a single elementary school. I could be wrong, but I think it's going to be a tough sell, but we'll see where that goes. But there's a lot of potential expenses within the next couple of years that I can see happening for this town. And I just want to say that, thank you.
Brian, this is Bob. Is there somewhere a like proposal document on what this entails and some details and some options? I don't know what, you know, I mean, the summary is great, but I don't really know what is meant by consolidate. Are we talking about new, new construction? Are we talking about, you know?
Absolutely. So there's a huge file on it at the town manager's office. We've had engineers involved. I believe it was Crossman. They put together blueprints. It's gone through DEM. We got approval from DEM because there's wetlands in the back. So it's, all the legwork has been done. Not to say that, that it can't be changed or, or, you know, new ideas can be invested, looked into. But there's been a, a lot of work done on it. In fact, the town manager approached me at one point to assist him in, in the layout and different, he was proposing different ideas. So they have a couple of different sets of blueprints and construction costs and quotes from various companies. So, you know, everything down to like the furniture and it was an expansion off the back of the building that would bring the building and zoning from their office at Public Works and also the Fair House employees. And then the town manager's office would all go into that new space and the, the IT. I don't know if you guys have seen the IT director's office, but it's a closet, so.
Be happy to have that.
Yeah, so he, you know, he had a little expanded room and there was actually a conference room. So I can provide all that to you. Just let me know what, what you're looking for. Lisa can make copies for all you guys if you want, if you're interested. Just let me know what, what exactly you're looking for, because there's a lot, I know it's a pretty thick file.
Basically, you're expanding the current town hall?
That, that was the, yup, that was the proposed idea, yup.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Councilman Harris, you know, through the years, a number of years, the old post house, which is the building that's next to the Hopkins Historical Association Church, was looked at as for town purposes, very close to the town hall and not advocating it, but I think it should be looked at or at least considered. Whether or not certain town agencies, whether it's building and zoning or others, planning could be moved to that facility for less money and it's.
Privately owned.
And what?
It's privately owned.
It's privately owned, but you could also make an offer. And just as a potential thing, I know it's privately owned, but it was privately owned when it was considered to purchase for the town. And it's a possibility that we should at least not write off and think it's a possibility to use that for town purposes even today. I'm just throwing that out there as an option. Brian, let's beat this one to death, but when's the last time we, we seriously had, seriously had a contractor or a company or, you know, a contractor or vendor come in and say, okay, look, I could do it X, Y and Z.
It's been a few years, probably I would say two or three years. Bill McGary was handling this for quite some time. And he, at one point, because it was being funded again after, for the first time in a few years, he realized that the quote that we had was probably dated and he asked for some updated figures. So they, there was an update to the proposal, I, I want to say a few years back.
Yeah, I mean, if we're at one point, was it 1.6 we're, we're at right now? I mean, you know, I realize our goal is 2 million, 2 million it looks like. But, you know, would you say that was an estimate, what, five, six, seven years ago?
Yeah, I would say three probably, but you're right, every year it goes up, that, that projected cost.
Right.
Because everything is going to go up, the cost of furniture, the cost of wood, the cost of labor. So you're right, it's probably not an, an accurate number at this point.
I just, I just, I mean, how long has it been taking to get this money? How long?
Like 10 years.
We really want another 10 years or another five years to get? No, we can't pull that out of bounds, Steve. I mean. I mean, I think that's something we ought to look at. Maybe we just have, you know, a fresh new set of eyes can look at it. Yeah, we kick around, send it out, pull, send out and see, maybe get some estimates or something. I just don't want to be another 10 years down the road or five years, which it may be. And we're still in the same boat waiting for this magic pot. It's just, it's just a thought. I don't know of the other town councils though, but, you know, and I know what you're going to say. But since I've been here, this has always been a town hall. You know, you look at, go to other, some of the other, some of the other facilities or other towns. Richmond's got a beautiful town hall. Charleston, of course, I know they have money. Leslie, that's like the caveat, it's like the crown jewel. But, you know, I mean, maybe it's, maybe we need to take a look at it and say, hey, you know, maybe we can find somebody that can do this price range or something like that.
Mike?
Yup.
Mike, I just want you, I think that the other, that the former town councillors prided themselves on having a history of us obtaining the funds and not borrowing any. So as the funds came in, that's the way they, they did it. And as you can see on, on the, for the consolidation, Ryan has 250,000 for FY twenty-two, twenty-three and 120,390 for FY twenty-three, twenty-four. To hopefully go in to make up that 2 million so that we wouldn't have to borrow any money. They, they, you know, prided themselves on being fiscally responsible to the citizens and not putting the citizens.
Oh, no, I'm not, no, Sharon, I'm not saying go out and borrow it. No, I'm not saying, I mean, maybe, you know, is, is possibility we could have it done for what we have right now, that's all. But if Brian's going to, if Brian's going to peg down here over the next couple of years and if it's this board again or the next, or the next town council after this, you're coming close to the money, so we should feel so.
Well, my two cents would be, it, it, it seems to just get pushed down the road and pushed down the road because there's never a good year, you know, where our enrollment doesn't ever seem to go down. The charitable expense comes in every year at half a million or more. So we push it off every year and it, it's one of those things where we have this 1.6 million that is just sitting right now in a bank account, which is getting minimal interest. That from a finance perspective, that's the thing. It's like, we, we should either use it and do something with it because being a municipality, you can't invest money, right? Like you can't, can't put it in the market, you know, it's taxpayers' money. We gotta, we gotta be very prudent with those funds. So they're sitting in a savings, a high, high interest savings, but still, what, what are they getting? It's not even catching up at this point with rates where they're at. It's barely making up for inflation. So that's just my two cents. I mean, you know, I'm not saying it's something that addressed, I obviously didn't put money in it this year because I didn't think it was, we could, you know, it was the year to do it. But it is a big chunk of money that's just sitting, getting barely minimal interest.
Now, Bob, do you think, do you think about maybe looking, having a contract, giving us a price? Steve, what do you think? Sharon, what do you?
I mean, I think, Councilman Mop here, you know, I mean, if this was a cost estimate, say, seven, eight years ago, I mean, you're going to have to add 10, 15% to that cost. So, I mean, is that true $2 million cost now, 2.5 million? So are you just, you know, just always going to be chasing, you know what I mean? I, I completely, you know, understand what Mike's saying, you know, hey, is there anybody that's willing to potentially, you know, take the bite on it? You know what I mean? Are there certain concessions that we're potentially, you know, we could, could make on it? You know, I mean, are there certain, you know, as the original plans or whatever the plans are, can we shrink those plans? Just, just a little different. So A, like Brian says, you know, the money's not just sitting there, A. And then B, we're not just going to be chasing every year the cost increase on, on the project. I mean, because it's, you know, I mean, and I don't know, I mean, borrow money, I mean, I mean, I don't know. I know interest rates are low. I don't know if bond rates are low, I mean, low enough to kind of cover something like that. Where it's going to be, you know, I mean, is, is now the time to do it because of that? I mean, so those are some things to think about.
I agree with Humms too. I mean, if this, if this money is sitting there that long, chasing, I can say. But I agree with Sharon Humms' sense, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be borrowing money to pay for it, but, you know.
But at the same time, Mike, you're right, we might. But at the same time, Mike, you're right. If we might, it might, um, behoove us to find, maybe go out again and see, to update the costs. Maybe somebody who's really hungry for business might be willing to do it for less.
There you go. Bob, what do you think?
I, I agree with what everyone's been saying. I, I agree, first of all, that we shouldn't borrow, uh, in order to get this done. Um, but I also think that, you know, as Sharon said, there may be contractors out there that, that want the business and are willing to, uh, you know, come in a little bit less to get it, you know, to get the business. But I think we should probably at least look at, see what the numbers are, what, you know, what the expense would be. Because we have, we haven't really gotten the, the update for a few years. So I don't know what that costs to, uh, to get, you know, uh, an architect or a engineer to, to look at it again.
And I mean, obviously we, you know, we haven't seen plans. I mean, none of us have seen plans. Um, I mean, I mean, were the original plans to kind of keep with the consistency of the architecture of the building, you know what I mean? Or, or, or are we talking about adding a big brick wing on the side? You know what I mean? There's, there's probably a lot of ways to go. I think, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, with this. This has been brought to our attention. So now, I mean, I can honestly say that I'll, I'm definitely interested in sniffing around and taking a look at the plans and and what it's about. I mean, I, I kind of think that's, you know, probably where, where we should start with it. Whether or not, you know, um, we can have those plans maybe laid out someplace for us, you know, maybe here in the town hall and if, you know, one of, you know, I mean, at a certain time, and maybe just take a look at them and see what we're looking at. You know, square footage wise, you know what I mean? So it's.
This is, this has been talked about since I moved here in 01. What, 20 years later? I think it's a good idea. I mean, Brian, your, what do you think?
Yeah. Well, the, the only thing is, I mean, this is definitely a council decision. So I, I'm, I'm willing to help you guys provide, provide you with whatever information you need. Um, and, and the one thing I would say is that I recall that this project previously, um, and don't quote me on this, this is just going off memory. I think it was originally like 1.8. And I believe it was updated to 2 million a few years back. So I, I don't think it's escalated much beyond that if, if, you know what I mean? So I don't think it's seven, eight years dated. But again, I'll, I'll make, I can get together with Lisa. We can put together packages for you guys. I can pull out all the pertinent information and provide it to you guys and then you guys can do as you wish with it.
Okay.
Yeah, that, uh, that'd be great if you could do that.
Yes. I, I, I don't see it. It's probably something that's going to take a lot of discussion. It's a big, big project, big decision. So you know, if you guys get the information in your hands, you have, you know, all the time you need to, to review it and discuss it amongst yourselves.
And the other thing, Brian, maybe I might be wrong, but this, this, uh, this new bond issue that we have to, to vote on. Isn't there some money from the state that could, could maybe help us? Infrastructure money or something like that?
There, we entertain, um, we could look into some state money. I don't know anything specifically that would, that would fund this type of thing. Generally they're more, I, I mean, it's, it's very possible. Let me look into it. I know the infrastructure bank, again, I know you guys aren't interested in, in borrowing it and neither am I. Uh, but the infrastructure bank does give very low interest loans. Um, but again, I don't think it's something we'd want to. My whole thing on the, the debt service and we'll go into more detail on when that gets brought up. Um, what we've tried to do in the past is, is kind of keep our total debt service level. So we, once we pay off a bond, then we can enter, entertain, you know, say we pay off a bond next year or the year after, then we maybe would go out for another bond to redo the roads or something like that. You know, we generally just want to keep that debt service level. Um, and, and, you know, not, not acquire too much debt for the town. Try to pay things off as we go. Um, but yeah, to answer your question, Sharon, we, uh, we definitely could look into grants. Um, I'm, I'm not aware of any, but that's not to say that there's not options out there.
Love that G word.
All right. So excellent. So we've, we've, we've kind of come to a, well, not an agreement, but, um, but Brian has offered to put in the works a package for us to look at and to explore options.
That would be great.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, it could be something that, I mean, you know, that, that, that this council could at least get, you know, I mean, not say a feather in our cap, but you know, something to kind of, you know, make a, you know, slight march, you know? I mean, I think. Yeah. I mean, I, I definitely think it's definitely worth the effort to look into our options at this point. Because, you know, I firmly believe the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. And that's just.
Right.
That's just, I mean, it's gonna, we'll be chasing it forever. So we kind of, you know, can't have a, what's that? A champagne taste on a beer budget? You know what I mean? You're gonna have to.
Okay. So, um, the next capital improvement project, if you guys want to, if you're all done with that issue, um, we'll, we'll provide that information. We can move on to the 1904 building. Um, so talking about kicking a can down the road. This is, this is another, um, this is another project that's been, hasn't been addressed in quite some time. And I know there's a lot of concerns throughout the town. Um, we've had committees, um, and Lisa could probably help me again with my memory, but there was actually a committee that came in and spoke to the council at one point, um, that was put together to try to address this, this problem with the 1904 building. Um, it's something that has not been addressed. Um, it was funded, partially funded last year. And it's, um, we had planned last year to partially fund it, last year and partially fund it this year. Um, so I'm just following through on what, what the plan was for the, the project. Um, and that would require 165,000 for this year to get us at a total of 300. And again, that might be something that, um, might not be on, on the, the dollar amount of that project might not be down to the penny is what I'm. That makes sense. It probably isn't exactly 300,000 and, and we probably, um, hopefully, um, it didn't go up too much. If not, we could probably cover the remaining costs elsewhere.
Brian, when's the last time we had a quote or a, an estimate of what it would cost to do that demolition?
I, I can't answer that off the top of my head. Um, I know it was talked about last year at the, when we did the, funded the first portion of it. Um, and I can't remember exactly, but it, it's not as old as the, the town hall expansion.
It's been within the last three years because we, I know the last council found out that it had gone up to the three, the 100,000 during the last two years, the, uh, you know, last council. So.
Right. Does that, does that estimate include, uh, handling any asbestos? I'm sure there's asbestos in that building. Okay. So that's covered under that.
We had engineers go through. They gave us three quotes originally. One was to um, remove the hazardous materials and, and demo the building. One was to refurbish it to be a school and one was to refurbish it to be office buildings. And the, the numbers to refurbish it, um, those two options were did not seem feasible. It's too much money. I think, I want to say it was like 1.8 million or something astronomical to get rid of all the lead paint, all the asbestos, all the pipes. So they just said that the best option is to just get rid of it. Unfortunately.
Brian, was this some kind of reclaim in the metals or something at one time when scrap was up kind of high?
Yeah, I think that's worked into the, to the quote. They're, they were going to try to salvage as much as they could. And I know for historical purposes, there was a lot of conversation about, um, preserving some of the building, you know, the bell and some of the doorways and there, you know, the council didn't want to see it just go away and they wanted to try to preserve as much as possible.
Yeah, but then Tom Buck, Tom Buck was for, on that committee. And I think that they sent out letters to a lot of places to see if they would, you know, give us a quote for those kinds of things. And we didn't get much in return. Isn't that right, Lisa?
That's correct.
For the salvage, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, it's, it's four walls. I realize it's.
I can't hear what.
Yeah, Mike.
I'm sorry. I said, maybe we should take a look at it again. I realize the asbestos is going to be a tough, is it going to be the expensive part? But they take buildings down all the time. I mean, maybe we should go out and see if we can get another price on it or something like that. Or I just, just don't want to see one of these things that keeps, keeps rolling and rolling through each town council and it gets nowhere.
So, yeah, we would have to do an RFP, you know, according to our procurement policy, anything that big of a construction project, we, we have to go do an RFP. So we, we'd solicit bids from anybody who was willing to submit a bid. Um, and generally we go with the lowest bid, um, unless they, unless the council, um, or we collectively thought that the lowest bid wasn't the best option for some reason. But, um, so, so once, once we got the funding, um, approved, you know, again, this is going for next fiscal year. So if it gets approved this year, we'd get, um, an RFP put together prior to July 1 and then start soliciting bids at that point.
I think you should do that.
I think, yeah, I, I think we should move ahead and, and get this started anyway.
That way we know what we're looking at for, for updated costs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because then we can have a real conversation about it, you know? Or better conversations.
Works for me. Council first, what do you think?
Since I'm an alumnus of the old livery school, it's a sore subject and I'm going to.
Alrighty.
Lisa, were you saying something, Lisa?
We just can't hear.
Everybody, I think people are getting tired because everybody's mumbling.
Well, that's the mask too, kind of like, I've already been wearing one for like, this would be 11 hours.
I wear one underneath the truck all day long.
All right. Well, if, if, if you guys are, um, okay with those CIP projects, the, the discussion wise, for now, I think that concludes, um, the, the workshop. Um, so Steve, Ellis, I mean, it's your, your show.
I'm, I'm fine. I mean, um, I would like to just, you know, go, go around the table. If anybody has any concerns, questions, follow ups or anything like that. Kind of address that now. So we can start with Sharon. Sharon, do you have any, any comments, concerns?
Only, only I wonder what the, the, uh, the, what the, the, uh, Charahoe School, um, committee, if they really are going to go forward. I, we just need to keep, I guess, um, in contact with that, that committee to make sure when and if there's going to be a financial responsibility for us in this next fiscal year. You know?
I got you. As far as a, um, like a vote, a, um, a district wide vote and.
Yeah, yeah. And I think they said that, you know, when I talked to Ryan, just like he said, if, if he has to, if they have to get an engineer to do, you know, or an architect to get even closer, um, building plans and stuff. And also to negotiate for land. Um, I just think we need to, we just need to keep, be kept in the loop, I guess, of information. That's all. And if in fact, we have to come up with any money, I, I just want to know.
The, uh, Scott Bill's verse, the bottom line is the Charahoe School District is easily the most political thing in the local area. And the fact of the matter is that every town has a veto power. And, and when they talk about changing the Charahoe Act, it's a very sensitive subject, particularly Charleston gets the answer because they're always afraid somebody's nerving up an equalized tax rate or something like that. So, uh, the Charahoe Act would apparently have to be changed because there is a, a part of the Charahoe Act that deals with uh, elementary school, the students going outside their hometown. I know in some way procedurally it can be circumvented. I don't know the details. But there's always been a thing in Charahoe historically about children attending an elementary school in their hometown. So it's a very complicated subject. And I would surmise that if you need every town to agree to it, at least one of the towns would object to it. Also, I'd like to say as a lifelong resident of the town of Hopkinton, there's always been an obsession. I know Mr. Day of Richmond has been on the school committee for a long time. He's always been obsessed with Hopkins and having two elementary schools. But we, we, we will say, and all you have to do is check and ask him because he's talked about it so many times publicly.
Oh, yeah.
That, uh, I just, it's, it's going to be very difficult, I would imagine politically. Uh, not counting parents who are concerned about long bus rides to children to have one elementary school. We'll see where it goes. And, uh, but Charahoe is a very uh, politically hot topic in, in, in the three towns. We'll see where it goes. That's all I'm going to say. It's what we're 60 years, uh, 67 years of experience living and growing up in Hopkins. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this president here, Brian, I want to say thank, say thank you for putting all this together. I know there's always a lot on your plate. There's always something like that. I appreciate it. To back, to back, uh, to back Sharon up, it just, the way that was presented the other night, it just kind of like, it was kind of just, here, here you go to stay. And all of a sudden, right away, before we could even kind of digest or even before we even got anything and anything from Ryan, it was already voted on. So it's kind of like, boom, here you go. Nobody got any copies of anything on that. And if we're, you know, the, the thing of it is, is if you listen to some of the, listen to some of the, the fall of the conversation the other night was, it's kind of like that doomsday thing. If you don't do it now, you're not going to get it somewhere down the road. And there, it, well, I think we're all smart enough and we'll, you know, we're all old enough to sit back and say, you know, that good things, you know, the, the good thing sounds kind of, you know, you really got to watch what goes on. And if everybody's counting on the state to give up, was it 80%? Yeah, 80%. But if we do it now, we're going to get 8%. If we don't, we're going to go down to 65%. But there's just way too many moving parts, you know? Okay, okay. All right. Well, it's going to cost 103,000, 103 million dollars to build a school. That's great. But what about the land property? Trust me, if I, if I own property next to a school, I'd be like, ooh, hold on, here we go. So there's a lot to it and I 100% agree with Sharon on this. So I'm going to say.
Well, I, uh, this is council muck. This is the one thing, like you talked about smarter. Well, the count, I mean, the school committee, knowing that they are a completely separate entity from, you know, the Charahoe School District, it's, 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 it's like their own government. You know what I mean? They, they know that ultimately this is going to go to the transparent. So they know us as councillors or us as a town that we necessarily don't really have a stake, you know? So they're going to do what they think and, and, and they're going to push it forward. And that's kind of how they, they operate, obviously with their budgets. I mean, that, that's just the way they handle business and and that's the kind of, you know, it, it kind of stinks for us because you know, they're going to do what they're going to do and they're going to propose it to the voters and it's really going to come down to voters making the decision. And that's kind of.
And what you'll find, Steve, is that, what you'll find is that Charleston will vote for it because the price of it is per student. And Charleston has the fewest students. So for them, they'll vote for it. Richmond is going to vote for it because they need the expansion. So, so they're, so you've got two towns. Now, the, the way the vote counts, it's the, it's the, the most vote, um.
An aggregate vote, yes.
An aggregate vote, right. But what happens is, well, I, I was going to say that most of the time, Charleston and Richmond bring out more people than we bring out. And so even though we have a lot of people, uh, you know, we have people that say no, um. And so even though we have a lot of people, uh you know, we have people that say no, um there's more people in Charlestown and Richmond that say yes. So, and 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 it's not a lot of people voting, in in total, it's not a lot of people voting. If five thousand, we, you know, we have five thousand um or six thousand registered voters. If if they all came out and voted, you know, whatever Hopkinton wanted, would happen. But you only get a couple of hundred that come out to vote, am I right, Lisa?
Well, as it pertains to the budget, yes, it's the aggregate vote, yes, no, with the three towns, where the pertains to a budget. For when it's a bonding question, that's a way different animal, and Councilor Hurst mentioned the veto power of the individual towns, so if one town says no, it it has to be unanimous by all three towns in that instance.
Okay, that's good to know.
So, 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 so Lisa, with that being said, you're talking about the the number of voters in town, so if the number of voters in Hopkinton do not approve it, then it it's a no. You need a, all three towns.
You need all three towns to approve it.
Oh, good.
If one town says no, and then it's no.
Right.
And.
Now, what happens is the Friends of of Charahoe will get their people out to say yes, and we don't have too many people other than the Friends of Charahoe to vote, to 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 bring out the vote that says no.
We still have a silent majority that uh the uh, never count your votes before that cap.
I will tell you, I have stood outside this door waiting to get in here to vote against the the school budget, well, not this time, but last couple of years, waited for the door to open up, maybe the person went in line and went to vote, whichever way. I've always seen, if you watched the last couple of years, you know, people are kind of asleep at the wheel, kind of like what Sharon's saying is Charlestown will bring out five hundred, Hopkinton will bring up thirty five, Richmond will bring up fourteen, boom. Anytime you turn around, it's always Charlestown, because like Sharon said, what Sharon, what'd you call those people? The Charahoe Alliance? Friends of Charahoe.
Oh, the the Friends of Charahoe.
We should start, we should start with me, the Friends of uh, uh, yeah. Uh Councilor Marvel, looks like he has something to say here.
Yeah, so what, so I think that, you know, on the same subject of not getting enough people out to vote on uh something in in Hopkinton, I think that part of the problem is there's a lot of people that probably aren't aware of of what's going on, or maybe they're, you know, sort of aware, but not really knowing what the details are.
I think it. Into what flavor it is.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, for us to be able to to serve the the residents of town, we should probably think of a way that we can get the information about this project, and, you know, without having an opinion of it, just put it out there to the residents and and, you know, do a, you know, put it up on our website. If we have the information, put it on our website, and then do a robo-call to all the residents, basically saying, by the way, if you don't already know about this, this is something that the Charahoe School System's doing, please go to our town hall website to get details, because there's gonna be a vote coming up for it.
I agree.
I think we really should start being proactive about getting the word out to residents about things that are gonna impact us.
I mean, that too, Bob, I and I also agree, I mean, I I wouldn't object to, you know what, i- if they want to talk about it, I mean, I feel like everybody should have all the information. You know, Sharon says there's a lot of loose ends here, you know, obviously, they they chose a direction to go into, so now there's you know, now now they can narrow their focus, which is gonna allow them to narrow down, you know, maybe some fixed costs, maybe some, you know, they're gonna have a little more direction, hopefully, so, you know, with that being said, I mean, I have no problem, and I and and I would schedule something then, for them to come up here, show up here, and and hey, once a month, I mean, well, I mean, whatever they, I mean, every two months, come in and present your plan, you know, up update the town at a at a at a at a workshop, I mean, this is your, your, your chance to, you know, put your cards on the table and let the people of Hopkinton know, you know, what they're uh, they may or may not be getting themselves into.
I mean, let people ask questions.
Sure, um I I'm gonna let Brian speak real quick, Brian, go ahead.
Uh just uh real quick, I I just wanted to, I I believe the debt service, which they're they're going to bond this project, I believe that's split a third, a third, and a third, it's not, it's not by enrollment. That's the way it's been done in the past, and I believe that's in the Charahoe Act, at least, so you probably know more than I do, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, I don't want to say specifically yes or no, I think you're on the right track, but I, I don't want to just say, yeah, that's right, I don't.
Well, our current debt service, our current debt service, if you look in the school budget, it's all, it's a third, a third, a third. The debt service is always.
Hopefully, that would be the case.
Yeah.
So, and all, that's not.
It would certainly be something we would verify with them.
Yeah.
To verify.
Councilman Hurst, I would like to say that as far as communication, the Secretary of State sends out a brochure every time they have a question, there's no reason not to have, even when we have the town budget vote, to have a mailing, a bulk mailing saying this is what you're voting on, so people are informed, they get that, you know, without editorializing on on the merits or not, just explaining what the vote is, and 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 doing bulk mailing from it, people live very busy lives. Uh and it's tough to stay on top of everything, not everybody's engaged in politics or or government like we are.
I mean, informing the residents would be money lost.
Yeah, it'd be just like the Secretary of State does.
I think, I I think we need to be careful here on what we're talking about, because I don't think this was on the agenda. So I think we, before we get into too much detail on this, um I think, I think if we get too far off topic here, um nah, I just.
We're dealing with the verendums and taxes, so it is kind of relevant, how do you get the public informed on this stuff, so it is relevant.
Okay, um with, I I see Joe, uh I'm gonna end this with Joe Moreau, uh looks like he's had his hand up here for a little while, I just wanted to allow the council to kind of you know, get some points out there, uh go ahead, Joe.
I didn't raise my hand, but that's okay.
Hey, what's up?
Um, it is, well, um, you know, I'm looking at the town calendar right now, and I don't know when this was added, um but on the homepage, it has the proposed operating budget for two one twenty one. And at one of the meetings, uh you guys were kind enough to to have the dates for the budget, so uh I wrote all those dates down. But when you click on the town calendar itself, I can hear Lisa now, sorry, Lisa. I don't know whose, whose responsibility it is, but on the town calendar for Thursday, uh February eleventh, there's a police commission crossed out, and conservation commission uh at the town hall. So I typically go to the town calendar, but I, now I've learned to also go to the homepage, and I don't see any other dates listed on the town calendar for um the budgeting workshops.
I will check with Chris tomorrow.
Thank you very much, and I owe you. See ya. You're welcome.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, I think we're pretty good here, I I just want to thank Brian for all of his work putting this together for us, and um thank you, um I don't know if anybody else has any closing comments, but before we adjourn the meeting here.
Yeah, no problem, guys, thank you.
All right, all right, I don't think I need a motion to adjourn a workshop, I think we're.
No, no, just close it.
Excellent, have a uh have a great weekend.
You too.
Three days.
Okay, bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.